Call this meeting, Doris. If you haven't had an opportunity, please sign the guest register so that the city clerk has a list of all the folks that are here because she may have missed somebody. All right. Agenda item number two is attendance roll call.
Peterson.
Here.
Swager.
Here.
Alvedras.
Here.
Livinggood.
Here.
Crone.
Here.
Hoffman.
Here.
Mr. Petty.
Here.
Mr. Wagner.
He's not here. Mr. Wagner's attending the city manager's conference, a commitment he had made some time ago, so. Agenda item number three is public comments and announcements, to having public comments and announcements. Yes, ma'am.
Hello. I'm Buffy Hughes. I am the state Main Street Director with the Oklahoma Department of Commerce, and I am here on behalf of Main Street Guyman.
Okay.
And you know, Main Street Guyman began in 2005.
Ma'am, could you bring that microphone closer to me? They can't hear you in the back.
Oh, sure. Is that better? Okay. Began in 2005, and since the program started, they have had a total private sector investment, reinvestment of over $13 million, and the ROI on that was $33 to one. When you calculate in the public dollars, over $18 million has been reinvested in downtown, and that ROI is about $45 to one, which is way above the national average of 26 to one. Now, Main Street is a community-led, volunteer-driven program, and they work in the four points of organization, design, promotion, and economic vitality. It is a holistic approach to revitalization of a historic district. Now, Melin and Christine and the rest of her board, they really embrace the cultural diversity of Guyman, and they also listen to what the community wants, and that is how the board develops their annual action plans. And the action plans are based on the four points, and it's implemented through the director, the committees, as well as partnerships and volunteers. And the action plans are sent to us at the Oklahoma Main Street Center every year, and it's basically just a summary of what it is they're trying to accomplish. We come annually to do an assessment, and we look at those action plans and talk to everybody that's on the board, Melin and the committees, to see what they have accomplished. And really, they have a great track record, and they actually have projects within all four points. You know, they have educational classes on how to improve your business, how to improve your online presence. They have facade grants. They've been doing a bench project. They also have, get the youth involved through Aggies families, Transformers, and Cassie's kids. They have healthy living lunch and learns, and their international events are spectacular. Last year, in November, we had every director across the state here in Guyman, as well as we had, we actually also had people from National here. And we all attended the Pangaea Dinner. It was spectacular. It blew us away, and we actually talked to National about getting that out to all of our Main Streets to try to implement it. But, you know, there really is a great deal of pride within our community here, within your community here, and every year, Main Street Guyman has been both state and nationally accredited. So they are doing a fantastic job. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
I'd like to speak.
Yes, sir.
I'm here to support Main Street Guyman.
Your name?
I'm Steve Smith.
Okay.
I don't need that. I'm here to support Main Street Guyman, and I would ask that you guys continue your support and you continue the financial support in the amount that's requested. When I think of things that are going on in Guyman, Oklahoma, when we're talking about the Guyman Fiesta, the Azuma Festival, the five-state poker run, I think this thing's going to happen down here at Main Street Guyman. And they, and so they, they bring, they bring people together, not only in Guyman, Oklahoma, but they bring people from the area, and they spend money in Guyman, Oklahoma. And one of the things that, some of the, a couple of things I'm really proud about is the way they get other people in other communities invested in Guyman, Oklahoma through cleanups and things like that. They get OPSU to come over here and help us clean up for Pioneer Day and other events, and I don't know that they realize that they are teaching these kids the scout law, and that's to do a good turn daily. So they're teaching them to clean up the community, do other things, and take that back into their community. But one of the really neat things that they do is they do a special game day in partnership with OPSU baseball. And Special Game Day is a day for families with special needs kids, children, and they meet over at the OPSU baseball field. The players divide them up into different groups. Part of the group will practice hitting, part of them will practice catching, part of them will practice throwing, and then they gather after all of that's done, then they gather out there on the field, and you've got all these baseball players that are lined up, surrounding all of these kids. Kids that are on crutches, kids that, that maybe have a prosthetic, kids that are in wheelchairs, kids that are using a walker, and kids that, they go out there and they hit the ball, and maybe they'll pitch the ball to them, maybe they'll hit it off of a stand, but maybe they're like my granddaughters. And somebody has to hit the ball for my granddaughters, and then somebody has to grab them by the hand and take them to run to first base and the second base and the third base and home plate. I thought I saw a coach here. Coach, you need to work on their feeling because somewhere, every one of these kids, there's so many darn overthrows that these kids all make it home. Okay? And so what, part of what they're doing is they're teaching these kids and other college students that participate that you don't have to fear my granddaughter. There's no fear, there's no fear with dealing with any of these special needs kids. And so they all get a T-shirt, they all have a lot of fun, all the families get together and meet with other people that have, that have the same kind of issues that they have, and our dear friends at Seaboard feed us hot dogs. And these are a lot of the things that you guys don't see that's going on with, with Main Street Guyman, and so I just want you to help these guys out and continue to support them in the community, and I want you to help them to support them financially. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We're going to have to limit you to three minutes. We always do that, so, and if you're, and I realize a lot of you are in support, and we understand that, we'll let a few more go, and then we'll go on with Melin's with the other rest of, because they have a presentation that I think will fill those needs.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Nice to be here in front of you all. I want to talk about service to the community, and I want to talk about a legacy. So years ago, whenever Melin worked for the city of Guyman in community development, there were a lot of projects that happened. There were over $10 million worth of grants that were put into the community. That was water systems, sewer systems, improvements to the parks, new parks, walking trails. All of those things happened during that time. There were a lot of other projects that the city of Guyman can do. You can do anything that is of general benefit to the community.
Diane, you want to pull your microphone down?
So you can do anything that is of general benefit to the community. So grants for the chamber happened, the Texas County Coalition that for 20 years has been working to improve the health of the community, the Oaks of Mamry Shelter, everybody knows that, the group home for the sheltered workshop, Lowe's and Fish's, their new building, the bus system, all of those things happened during that time through community development. That's a department that you don't have anymore. That's an effort that's not happening through the city. So let's talk about what happens through Main Street Guyman. The Fiesta that for 20 years was put on by the city of Guyman has now been taken over and is being done by Main Street, supporting new business owners, getting new businesses started, downtown events, bringing people out, supporting the businesses, driving economic development, cultural education. We talked about Pangaea. We talked about the programs that are put on at the library, volunteer programs, bringing people out in the community to work for the park system, cleanup, those kinds of things that you're not having to pay for through city funds, supporting the library programs, the farmer's market, table gatherings, outback grants. And the biggest one I want to bring out is the Panhandle Counseling and Health Center. We are in our third year. That annually renewable grant is up to $789,000 that comes into this community every single year. That's 16 high-quality jobs. That's healthcare for people who can't afford it. That is a lot of income that comes in, and that's directly from the benefit of having Main Street Guyman and the experience that Melin brings to that program. Now, you can go hire somebody to be your community development, and you're going to pay them at least $30,000. Their benefits are going to be half of that. That's $45,000 that you're going to pay somebody that doesn't know boo about community development because they're going to have to learn it. So you're much better off, and it's much better use of your dollars to hire somebody that has and support a program that's been doing this for years and years. So I'm here to ask you to continue to support Main Street Guyman. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So I have a loud voice, so I'm going to guess this is probably where I need to stand. I'm Jeremy Zeller. I'm with the Oklahoma Department of Commerce. I am with the Oklahoma Main Street Center. I am also the liaison for Guyman, and I'm a person who really just kind of likes to give the facts of things. So basically what Oklahoma Main Street does, we support business consultations for her businesses, interior design assistance, architect assistance. This is all supported by them being a Main Street program. As far as the years of me coming here, I'd say probably the best board and the best rotation of board that I have seen, their presidents have done a stellar job. As far as our partnerships with Department of Commerce, we work with community development block grants, research, retail analysis, so we bring in reports for them. That involves business retention, business recruitment. These are things that normally cost a program or a community that doesn't have a Main Street program a few thousand dollars. These are reports and documents they get for free. So I just want you to understand that at the state level, they get a lot of free services for being a Main Street program. And it's, again, everything is free if you are a Main Street program. Dollar value, zero. So that's what I have to say.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Tom Davis, vice president of Iron Thunder Motorcycle Club. We have over 1,000 people come to that run in May. They mostly stay two nights, and it fills up all the motels and hotels in town, and also have overflow into Guyman, I mean into Hooker and Tux Helmet and some in Limpel. More than 10 years ago, Main Street Guyman, under the guidance of Charles Light, partnered with us and started providing the outback on the night before the event. That really helped our run out because it made it a two-day event, so it gets people in town for two days. So them guys spend two nights in town. This also gives the event, without having to work our members when we're setting up the run, during the outback, we have a pre-registration site where we get that done in the evening instead of trying to pre-register everybody in the morning. Besides, we have a mail registration that's already done, and we get those packets ready at the same time. We're a small club with less than 15 members, and a few years ago, we were looking at not being able to have enough workers for the run, and Main Street Guyman partnered with us and volunteered to get us help. It takes over 50 volunteers for this run, so it's a major run. It's been, it's been publicized in major motorcycle magazines across the United States. We have people from Florida and Maine come to this run. There are things Main Street Guyman volunteers do that help everyone in our city you don't hear about. Iron Thunder Motorcycle Club gives an average $20,000 a year to individuals with medical needs, who even help with funerals, just whatever needs. We're not opposed to helping people in any way we can. And also, Mayor, we spend about $10,000 on the meal, and if all these people, say 1,100 people come in town, spend $100 in town that weekend, that's $11,000 that goes into city coffers for taxes. So that's, that's about all I've got to say. We need Main Street Guyman. Without them, we aren't going to be able to just put this run on. We just can't do it. We've got to have help. Thank you.
Thank you.
This will tip down far enough to hear me. I'll talk up. I am Mary Long. For those of you who don't know me, I'm a small person with a small voice, but I think it's important that you hear from the small people also. I'm firmly convinced that Main Street Guyman brings in much more revenue than you have ever spent on it. All of its programs are very important. The one I am most familiar with is the farmer's market, and it's probably one of the smaller programs, but people love it. They love being able to come out and get fresh produce and sweet corn and baked goods and soap, and while they're here, they continue shopping. They're already out and about to the farmer's market, so they don't go straight home necessarily. They stop at the store somewhere and pick up a few things. They go window shopping, maybe, down Main Street. My page won't turn. I know what I wanted to say. It's very important that we keep Main Street Guyman. I'm concerned that if we drop the program for even one year because of possible financial hardships, we'll never get it back. Things tend to disappear once you take them off the table, and I would hate to see that happen. So I strongly encourage you all to please keep Main Street Guyman. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
My name is Paula Lucas. Three years ago, my husband and I moved to Guyman, and one of the most welcoming things that happened to us when we moved here was the facility of Main Street Guyman. They were there when we had questions, and they made us feel most welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Council, the Guyman Public Library and Art Center has collaborated with Main Street Guyman on numerous projects over the years. In 2015, the library hosted a Smithsonian exhibit called Hometown Teams, in which we featured OPSU's rodeo team with events featuring rodeo and cowboys, and Main Street was a big part in the, getting the grant as well as planning the events. For several years, Main Street Guyman has also hosted the archaeology speaker in October during Archaeology Month, and this past year, or past October, it featured an anthropologist, and all those were hosted, held at the library. And also in October of 2018, the library and Main Street Guyman worked together to bring a New York Times and number one international bestselling author, Jenna Blum, to Guyman for a dinner, book talk, and book signing, featuring Blum's latest book, The Lost Family. The seating was limited, but the crowd loved it. We have other ideas in the works, so I personally hope that the funding will be restored for Main Street Guyman because they are an asset to the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Teri Mora, and I'm also here in support of Main Street Guyman. Two years ago, the city of Guyman provided funding for Main Street Guyman in the amount of $30,000 annually. That funding was later cut to just $15,000, and still they managed to maintain an immense amount of programming that benefits community members from all aspects of life. I know you're hearing lots of many wonderful examples of programming through Main Street Guyman, so I'll limit my comments to just two areas that I'm personally involved with, beginning with Fiesta. This celebration was started by and sponsored by the city of Guyman in 1997. For 20 years, the city sponsored it and also received funding for it through convention and tourism. Two years ago, you, the city of Guyman, requested that Main Street Guyman pick up that event and sponsor it, which they have done and done well, but without any additional funding from either the city or convention and tourism. You're asking Main Street Guyman to provide programming for our community, but without any extra resources, and now you're asking them to do so with absolutely no funds from the city. In addition, Main Street Guyman provides the city with many community service projects. The annual cleanup days and additional project days are sponsored and managed through Main Street Guyman. Two youth groups that I work with, both the Folklore Dancers and Upward Bound at OPSU, have spent countless hours cleaning up alleys, picking up branches after ice storms, planting flowers, and painting at the parks, all because Main Street Guyman set that up. Because of their work with Main Street Guyman's community service projects, two groups at OPSU have received the outstanding collegiate effort for the state, for the Keep Oklahoma Beautiful Project, having been nominated by Main Street Guyman. The OPSU football team in 2016 and OPSU Upward Bound students in 2017. These things don't just happen. Someone has to organize and recruit, and then even take the time to help them be recognized. Main Street Guyman does all of that, and they do it for all of us in this community. I urge you to restore their funding or even increase for Main Street Guyman as an investment in the continued community projects. They are here for everyone in this community, and we need to be there for them. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to do about two more so we can move on through the agenda. I think everybody's in support that we've heard so far.
I'm very much in support of Main Street. My name's Keith Schultz. I'm a baseball coach at Panhandle State. I've been there for five years, for five seasons. Just a few things we're going to hit on, Aggies families for football, baseball, Special Game Day, we've talked about that. Our guys are very much in support of that, helping that. They work Fiesta. We get out into the community, painting, do paintings for the, at the parks and stuff like that. Pretty much, we have kids in the last five years from Australia, Japan, Canada, Dominican Republic, Mexico, Puerto Rico. Sometimes when they come here, that language barrier is, is very much a problem. Main Street and Main Street Guyman has helped so much with those kids, not just getting them out there to be in support of their community and help out, but it also gives back to those kids. It keeps them here longer. We don't want kids six, seven hours a day away from home and then feeling uncomfortable in those situations, and every year that I've been here at Main Street Guyman has been very much in support and help with them. I'll just close on, we teach our kids a lot of things, young men growing up at a university. We like to use that platform for them to do good things, especially in the public's eye. They can come in, keep their head in the books and get a degree, or they could come to a university and get in the community and learn and talk to people and leave with an education. So we are much in support as Main Street, and that I hope you are. Thank you.
Thank you.
See if I can be heard here. For those that don't know me, I'm Sherri Lindley. I'm with the Friends of Guyman Public Library, and we're not a non-for-profit, and we have funds and we like to do things to promote the library and the community. And we teamed up with Main Street Guyman. We talked Melin into helping us with a Christmas event, and it was called the Dickens of a Tale, which was her idea, and she helped bring volunteers in, and we also had our own volunteers, but we had a lot of fun with this. We brought musicians in, and we brought storytelling, and let's see, I have a whole list. We did food contests and Christmas light decorating contests. This was all-inclusive. We had the nativity scene out front and a photo booth. You could have your picture taken with Santa. And we had over 300 people show up for this event in December, one of the busiest times of the year. This was our first time to do it. We had no idea what the response would be, and our goal at Friends of the Library is to bring people into the library, hope that they realize the resources that are out there, and hopefully get people reading and using the resources. And we also did the arts part because we did have musicians, and I had to tell you, this is the biggest event we've had. We had over 300 people, maybe closer to 400 people come into the library, many of them for the first time. It was a very positive, all the volunteers, some of them from Main Street Guyman, some of them from 4H, some of them just from Friends of the Library, came in, and they all had fun, and we really promoted the library, which is the city. And we, we have, I think there were some library cards that were, people signed up for library cards, and I think we promoted the library well. We had children's activities, and I think our main audience was younger kids, which is a good audience to have in the library, to use, to read books and use our resources. But anyway, I would hate to see, to lose this resource of Main Street Guyman in town. Melin was a valuable resource. I don't think it would have been quite as successful without her. In fact, I'm pretty sure it wouldn't have, and I would just hate for Guyman to lose that resource. So I'm in support of Main Street Guyman. Thank you.
Well, thank you all for your comments, and so we're going to, we're going to move on so we can get through the rest of the agenda, and some of you are getting tired of standing, but you can swap out in chairs, I guess. Mr. Carter?
I have a comment about the hospital.
Where, yes, yeah, if you have a different comment, subject line, we'll, we'll take that.
I'm Robert Carter. Since I left my regular job, I've been involved with the seniors in the American Legion and a few items pertaining to the hospital with sales tax at 15 in this year. And as we, just like to remind the councilmen, that we have an election coming up on March the 5th. It's a county-wide election for a sales tax to, this will be county-wide, and we do have more, we have one meeting in Guyman already. We've had meetings around the county already. We're going to have a couple more in Guyman toward the latter part of the month. Those of you that might not have heard the presentation, it's very informative. Mike Boring does, has a good presentation on it, gives a little historical background as to how the, how the city, then the county, and then the trust, how the situation erupted and developed over time with an accounts payable that's close to $3 million. So it's informative, and it also clarifies exactly what the purpose of the sales tax is, which is not to maintain the hospital facility. I mean, it does maintain the hospital facility, but it doesn't operate the hospital, and that's the biggest thing we're concerned with right now, to let people know that what we're looking forward to down the road. We're just the, the trust is just the landlord of the hospital. We have nothing to do with the operation of the facilities, and I was, as just newest member of the board, I haven't been to a meeting yet, so I don't know exactly what all I'm going to do either. But I would like to tell you that I will be supportive with the city and the hospital trust and the hospital to see that we continue to have a hospital in Guyman, and that's really the thrust of, of everything I've done over the last several years. And just as one side light, I've always relied on Main Street Guyman to help me. Thank you.
Anybody have any other comments? Okay. We'll move to agenda item number four, is reports from council members. Have any reports?
I don't, Mayor.
Yeah, I do.
All right.
Just want to remind everybody that there's going to be three council seats up for election this year. And the filing period is next week, Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday. So this seat's pretty comfortable, so if you want to get a chance to sit in it, well, go file.
All right. All right. Shaun?
Nope.
One thing, getting kind of loud, it's ringing. If you can't hear me, hold your hand up. Couple of things, just pats on the back. Last Saturday, January 26th, if you've gone Facebook with Scott Doll or any of the FFA people, a bus full of Guyman FFA and other high school students traveled to Oklahoma City. They spent Saturday afternoon at the Regional Food Bank of Oklahoma. They prepared 16,338 meals to be shipped, totaling 19,606 pounds for the Oklahoma children. They were able to enjoy an Oklahoma City Thunder game before they came back to Guyman Saturday night. So that's just one of the outstanding things that our youth of our community does, and I think they need to be patted on the back for that. Saturday night, a reminder, the PSU Top Hand Rodeo Auction will be taking place at Pickle Creek. I think it's going to start at 5:30 this year, but bring your checkbooks and support the rodeo team. Hopefully, in the next week, we've been working, the council, the city's been working with Guernsey Engineers on the plans for the Main Street revitalization, as far as sidewalks and streets, drainage and other things. I heard today that they've got hard copies of the concept, pretty well-developed. We should be receiving those Monday, and we'll start reviewing them and probably have some public comments, but as soon as we can get that done, we help to go forward with trying to get some grants and some other assistance to do Main Street. And that's all I've got, so we'll go on to agenda item number five, approval of the consent agenda.
I make a motion that we approve consent agenda, item five.
I'll second. Have a motion and a second.
Crone?
Aye.
Livinggood?
Aye.
Alvedres?
Aye.
Swager?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got five ayes.
Agenda item number six is one of those neat things that we get to do. And you want him to come up front and be with you there, Melin? We'd like Larry Bueller to come up to the front, if your wife's with you or any of your family.
Bring your family there.
Bring them.
I wanted to tell you what is required to receive this award. This is part of the points of light thing that started way back with, I don't know, a long time ago when I was young. And you must be, the recipient must be a United States citizen or a lawfully admitted permanent resident. The awards are only for the volunteer service. There's no charitable support, doesn't take you up to another level or anything. This is all just on giving hours. No court-appointed community service qualifies. And all of the awards are issued by a certifying organization, which we had to go through and get qualified for, and Main Street Guyman was that organization. And the reason we went through specifically is because several of us talked about how much Larry Bueller does for this community. And so, he and I had to go through and qualify his hours, and he had over 4,000 hours just by going back five years. Now, 4,000 hours is how many hours it takes to work two years full-time. So he's quite impressive, and I think everyone needs to honor him. So Mayor, would you please present?
Well, I will, but first I want to read this letter that came with this deal. It's from the White House in Washington, DC. It says, "Congratulations on receiving the President's Lifetime Achievement Award. On behalf of a grateful nation, I thank you for your lifetime of service to your fellow Americans and those most in need. Through at least 4,000 hours of service, you have ensured the continuation of America's unparalleled commitment to improving the lives of others. You have served as a model of the American spirit. Your many hours of service have strengthened the bonds of cooperation and trust. They bring people together while helping to address some of the greatest challenges of our time. One of our nation's greatest strengths remains the compassion of our everyday citizens, who give so willingly of themselves and their lives for the benefits of others. Each generation of hard-working and kind-hearted volunteers has helped to write a new chapter of American greatness, and our nation is proud for your commitment to this honorable tradition. As we reflect on your many acts of kindness and charity throughout your life, our nation draws inspiration from those who answer the call to help their communities and our nation. With your continued efforts to build our nation's culture of service, America will proudly remain a land of freedom and opportunity for all. Thank you for your enduring commitment to serving your community and our nation. I trust that you will continue to work for the betterment of others and an even stronger future for the American people." And I think that's Donald Trump's signature.
And this is the highest award that can be given.
Don't get the big hit over this deal. All right. The Lifetime Achievement Award with the grateful recognition, the Corporation for National and Community Service and the Office of the President of the United States honors Larry Bueller with the President's Lifetime Achievement Award for his longtime commitment to building a stronger nation through volunteer service. Signed, President Donald Trump, awarded in 2018. And there is a real neat pin that goes with it, and so I'm going to let the pin hang on it, because I might drop it.
I have one thing to add. We at Brown and Associates Insurance want to express our appreciation and congratulations to you, Larry, on your President's Lifetime Achievement Award. Your dedication to your community is evident in the 4,000 hours you have given in the past five years to the Chamber ambassadors. Adding to that are many more volunteer hours that you've given to other organizations, and Guyman makes you truly an amazing person. In honor of your service, Brown and Associates would like to give a donation of $100 to a nonprofit organization of your choosing in your honor. Thank you, Larry, for being a role model, a mentor, a community servant, and leader. The citizens of Guyman are truly blessed to have you as our leader. Thank you.
Would you like to make some comments?
I don't know if I can get through this or not, but my whole life has been in public service when I was in the grocery business, but I started out wanting to go into the medical field, pre-med, and back, the reason my two daughters are here, and I'll get into that here in a second, is because of me volunteering. When I got out of college, there was war going on, and I was drafted, and I had a lot of colleagues and friends go into the service, and some of them went overseas and didn't come back. When I got drafted, one thing that was always, was always said to me, never volunteer, never raise your hand for anything. So I get drafted, I go to work lists, I spend a day in orientation, and the last group of the day, I spent eight hours in this big auditorium, and the last group that came out, I was pre-med in college, pharmacy, and the last group that came out was the A-Team of the Green Brays. The very last, and that was impressive there, and I got to thinking, you know, if I'm going in the service, maybe I ought to have the best training I could get, and I thought that was it. The very last person to talk that day was Sergeant Easter, the medic on the A-Team of the Green Brays. Who wants to be like me? I do, I do. And I had to be released from the service and volunteer for an extra year. If I didn't make the service, that extra year was probably, I had no guarantee of what I would go into. I'd probably been a cook. But, you know, the song says, 300 men will test a day, only three, or 100 men will test a day, only I was one of the lucky ones. And because of that, on the East Coast, I met my wife of over 50 years. She's under the weather and couldn't be here this evening, but that started my volunteering, and I was the lucky one. And I got to come home and got a lot of training, and then I go back into the grocery business, and spent 50 years serving the public and meeting. So my volunteering is about giving back to my customers that came in, and I've heard a lot of stories over the 50 years here in Des Moines, and it's by chance I got down here, but it's my choice that I stay or retire here, and I just love this community, and I did get through this. I didn't think I would. Thank you.
Agenda item number seven is presentation and discussion regarding Main Street's request to reinstate funding to the Main Street Guyman. So, Will, who's going to do your presentation, Melin?
Thank you, Mayor.
You bet.
My name is Vonda Wilkins, and I am a board member of Main Street Guyman. I've served on the board for six years, and I have served for two years as the chairperson of that board, and I wanted to thank you for having us on the agenda. And the first thing I would like to do is introduce two young men who are here tonight to show you a PowerPoint presentation. Daniel Ortega and Taus McIntyre are both members of our Transformers Youth Program. I was really touched by what the pastor had to say in bringing us that verse from Romans, "Be a good citizen," and you can't follow Larry Bueller, you know? Tonight is all about being a good citizen, and our Transformers program is about helping our youth to become good citizens at Guyman. So I'll turn it over to Lee Sean Manning.
Thank you.
I guess before we get started, I'm Daniel Ortega, he is Taus McIntyre. Before we get started, it'll hopefully be a little easier in your eyes. We have a printed copy of the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Okay, so usually I'll start a speech, I'll start a little quote of mine. One of the greatest businessmen and great inventor, Henry Ford, once said, "Coming together is a beginning, staying together is progress, and working together is success." Now, I need to present to you about the foundation of Main Street, which would be the next slide. Fantastic, sweet. So, Main Street Guyman, or Main Street in general, was founded in order to be able to reduce the amount of deterioration in Main Street areas or historic preservation, as we can see. One of the major accomplishments that where the Main Street program in general, or more specifically our Main Street Guyman does this, is through something called the four-point approach that you see in the slide. The four-point approach is firstly, organization, which is the cooperation and collaboration between our businesses and Main Street. Throughout Guyman, we see up and down Main Street, all these businesses that are starting out small, not any big names, no Walmart or anything, it's just a small business beginning out and needing to collaborate with each other in order to be able to stay alive. This is what organization means in this way. Now additionally, we also have promotion, which is to establish a kind of, a good mean of, or a good image on Main Street, or not specifically, or the town of Guyman. Many people or many tourists, when they come in, they first, the only thing they do is they see many of our businesses and see what Guyman has to offer. To be able to give a great promotion or great image of Guyman, we should be able to accomplish this in the second approach. Now, in the third approach, which would be designed is to keep Guyman in our top physical shape and in order, and to keep, they mentioned earlier about window shopping, that would be a very good example. Or another example that will be later on more explained is our cleanups that we do throughout the year. Our cleanups are to be able to keep Guyman, yes, clean, and also to keep a good and inviting image throughout Guyman. Now, one of the most important things that I believe that you are concerned with is our business development, or it can also be known as economic restructuring. Now, this is really important to Guyman because of the economic boost. One, I believe my partner just passed out to you the November board meeting where Guyman received a boost of about $12,000, where as Mrs. Buffy spoke about earlier, where many directors throughout the state, even national directors, came through to Guyman, to a literally small town of Guyman came through, and in order to be able to learn and boost our economy. Now, this is something that won't happen all the time, but when it does, it's one of the greatest things. But what does happen constantly is our essential goal of the historic preservation of Guyman. Now, explaining the four-point approach, this can all be told back to, as my quote that I said earlier about the whole, working together is success. Before Guyman can ever become a successful community, or an opening image, inviting image, or up in its physical top shape, and we need to be able to come together as businesses, which is the first step of organization or cooperation, is that would be the first step, and staying together is progress, which eliminating any competitiveness between any business or any other sort of external competition. And when, once all those two or all three of those steps are accomplished, we can also have our economic restructuring, which would be working towards success. Now additionally, which would be the next slide, is we can look at some of the numbers that we, that I spoke about in just a second ago. Two of the big things of which I'll speak about is the two biggest numbers at the top of the list. I hope my partner passed out to you a blue or green sheet. Okay? That works out well. Okay, so two of the biggest numbers that we see at the top is our Main Street, our community cleanup and the benches. Community cleanup is one of the biggest events that we have throughout our year. Usually, the biggest one ends up, it's around the time of April, before Pioneer Days, which is one of the biggest events that Guyman hosted, hosts for many, many years. I believe Guyman is at its 80, ooh, I can't remember. Oh, jeez. Somewhere around there. Okay, but the, as you, literally on that sheet, it says about how we have over 85 volunteers. I was present at the last one. We had OPSU, the football come out. We had Transformers come out. We had many different organizations come out, from the high school, from OPSU, and just the community in general come out and clean up the town of Guyman. We were able, I believe this past year, our main focus was the entrances of Guyman, so it would be Highway 54 on the northeast and southwest side, and then Highway 64 on the north and south side. Those were the main focuses of cleaning up and giving the purpose of an inviting image to Guyman. Now additionally, we see the benches. The benches, okay, yes, we, there was $5,600, but this is all part of the keeping of Guyman's design and its physical top shape. When you see the benches, you see an inviting, oh, this bench was donated by maybe Main Street Guyman, or PTCI, or TCEC. You see just an inviting area, because these benches just make it way easier for our town to keep a physical top shape. Now, when speaking about those two numbers, not only do we have those two largest ones, but we also additionally have anything continuing on the list, but I can just continue rambling on about any little thing, but the two biggest ones are very more important, the most important. The next slide also continues, talks about the more numbers, but, or, but this all totals out to the reimbursements to Guyman, which would be seen as the biggest number of $22,215. Now, earlier, Terri Moore spoke about that Guyman, Main Street Guyman originally was funded about $30,000 and then was cut down to $15,000. As you can see, we were able to return $15,000. Therefore, numbers don't lie. Moving on to what my partner has to speak about.
Good evening. My name is Taus McIntyre, and I'm a Main Street Transformer, and I'm very glad to be here. Main Street Guyman is a vital asset to our community. Beyond exceeding last year's monetary investment made by the city of Guyman to Main Street Guyman, as shown in the data provided, the indirect benefits made by Main Street Guyman and the services it provides and activities it organizes boosts local economy and city tax revenue by bolstering local commerce, training successful local business leaders, and providing our town with a sense of community pride and enhanced morale to create an active workforce that serves as a workforce that serves as a clientele of local businesses, which in turn generate a significant amount of tax revenue back to the city, in addition to the direct benefits of Main Street Guyman. We move to the next slide, please. Cultural programs organized by Main Street Guyman include Pangaea International Evening and Guyman Fiesta. Investments in community appearance include the community cleanup, which is entirely conducted by volunteers, and the donation of benches and flower pots to the city. Next slide, please. Local business support programs include Farmer's Market, Main Bucks, Shop Small Saturday, Lunch Mob, Cash Mob, Meet Me at the Market, Career Focus Professional Development Course, Bake at the Panhandle Breakfast and Business Class, Mystery Shop, and the proposed Start Your Own Business Workshop. Next slide, please. Other community programs that are investments in the future of Guyman are the Transformer Youth Mentoring Program, of which Daniel and I are members, and Aggie Families. Community promotion events include Outback, Five State Motorcycle Run, Shutterbugs, a highly active Facebook presence with over 4,500 local followers, and On the Breaks TV Show and Newspaper Column, provided by PTCI and the Guyman Daily Herald, respectively. Yes. And this is the final slide. This slide shows statistical data highlighting the immense outreach and financial returns made by Main Street Guyman. I emphasize the over $75,000 figure, a return that would shrink and be buried, would be burdened on the city without Main Street Guyman cooperation. What this figure represents is the volunteer hours. And these are volunteers that are organized and brought together by Main Street Guyman to work on things such as the community cleanup. And without the organization of Main Street Guyman that really allows the cooperation of these volunteers, these cleanup efforts really would be a financial burden to the city. And so this is another financial indirect benefit that Main Street Guyman has on the community. And what these activities do is they preserve the rich history of our community to ensure a prosperous future as our community continues to grow and evolve with the growth in industry, agribusiness, energy production, and much more. Without Main Street Guyman, the diversification and growth of our community would be severely hindered, as the proud workforce and diversification of local businesses has a snowball effect of attracting more and more businesses that are key to expanding and securing local commerce. Clearly, Main Street Guyman is a vital asset to our community and a worthy recipient of funding from the city of Guyman. Without Main Street Guyman and the services and programs it provides and organizes, cultural diversification and the health of local commerce could severely deteriorate. Main Street Guyman and the city of Guyman really have the same motive, to serve the best interests of Guyman. I urge the city council of the city of Guyman to secure funding for Main Street Guyman so that may continue its critical role in ensuring growth, longevity, positivity, and productivity in the future of our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Miss. Miss Vonda Wilkins? Oh, yes, one more thing. Okay, there was also one additional thing. Another person that also would like to speak about Main Street Guyman was sadly unable to join us, but he did send us a letter if y'all would like to look at this.
Thank you. Thank you. Ask Taus where his book is.
Now, this letter was from Senator Casey Murdock. He, I told, early before this, I contacted him about our whole situation here, and he responded to me with this letter to show to the council about his full support, which I'm gonna go ahead and read for the public if that's all right. "To whom it may concern, I highly recommend and support the Main Street Guyman program. The past experience of Main Street and downtown Guyman was crucial to its viability and improvement. The Main Street Guyman movement has transformed the way communities think about the revitalization and management of their downtowns and neighborhood commercial districts. Cities and towns across the nation have come to see the prosperous, sustainable community is only as healthy as its core. But the job is not completed when we need the resources provided by the state program to keep progressing. The services provided to small business owners and crucial to our survival, the jobs created and the sales tax revenue are essential to our community. Thank you for considering Main Street Guyman for designation. Sincerely, Senator Casey Murdock."
Thank you.
I guess at this moment, okay.
So I'm here to answer any questions that you guys might have for us. We obviously are here to request that you consider reinstating the funding that the city has traditionally granted to us. I want you to know that we understand that that is not an entitlement, that you owe us anything, but we are requesting that. And I have just a couple of brief comments to make first question, or to answer what I think might be some questions that you could have. I wanted to let you know what our mission and vision is. Those are contained in our bylaws. And our mission is promoting the history, culture, and commerce of downtown Guyman and surrounding areas. And our vision is connecting businesses, encouraging historic preservation, and engaging the local community to create a diverse and vibrant culture, providing social, educational, and economic activities. Our Board of Directors, we are what is considered a working board. I had the opportunity to go to Main Street Oklahoma Training when Melin wasn't able to go, and there was somebody speaking who wasn't a Main Streeter, and he was talking about boards not being very active, and everyone in the room laughed, because when you're with Main Street, you have a working board. Our board members are volunteers for Main Street Guyman. They are also required to be members of Main Street Guyman. Some of us, like myself, because I'm not a business owner, are individual members. Some are business members, some are both. Our board serves three-year terms and we are limited to two, three-year terms. So I've been on the board for six years, so I'll be rotating off this year. Our board is selected by our membership. Our Board of Directors provides a slate of nominees at our annual banquet, and our members vote on those, and they can also make nominations from the floor. So that is how our board is selected. Also, votes can be mailed in. Speaking of our annual banquet, it's coming up in mid-February, and we would like to invite all of you to attend. And at the end of my talk, I've got a packet of information for you, and we're including a ticket to our banquet, so we'd love to have all of you there. Also, our board members are required to serve on one of our committees. We have directors and operators liability insurance for, to cover our board, and that is through Brown Insurance Company. Also, our board is required to sign every year, and we actually do a conflicts of interest statement, where our board members are required to let us know on any topic that comes before the board about any potential conflict they might have, as a pecuniary interest. As far as our 501(c)(3) status, Diana Roberts has sent in our compliance paperwork. Main Street Guyman also is not a tax-exempt entity. We pay sales tax on everything that we buy. We typically buy everything local. We try to buy whatever we need to purchase from our members. We want to thank Buffy and Jeremy very much for coming from the state to be with us here tonight at this important occasion. And Buffy was talking about every year we complete and are required to by the state to complete and submit comprehensive action plans, and that goes to the state to show what we're going to do under their four-point program. And we are providing our action plans in the packet to you tonight. And this pre-planning is something that makes Main Street Guyman so effective. And another thing that makes Main Street Guyman so effective to me is our collaboration with both the Chamber of Commerce and the city of Guyman. We work very closely with both of those entities. Jada is an ex-officio member of our board, and she has voting privileges, and we also work very closely with the city. We work closely with Pete Hedrick, Karen Rice at the sanitation department, Martin Hernandez with Streets, George Guzman with Parks, Rachel Sides, of course, with the library, and many, many others, and we are so grateful for that. I think our state people can tell you that the Main Street programs that are not successful are the ones that don't have that kind of partnership, and we are very, very fortunate We have a beautiful building. I think four of you at least have been in it. I don't know if you have, Sean. Okay, we have a beautiful, beautiful building. And it was donated to us when Charles White, who is also on our board now, we're grateful to have him in his institutional knowledge. We have a beautiful building. It was donated to Main Street Guyman, and the renovation was done by very generous grants from the community, as well as just, you know, working volunteers to put that together. A few years ago, we had a problem with our roof. We have a flat-top roof and with lots of leaks, and we operate on a shoestring budget. I know Melin gives you our numbers every month, and so you know what our budget is and how we spend our money. We're very, very frugal, but we don't have a lot of money. And we were very worried about how we were going to pay for our roof that had to be fixed. And so I said, "Let's reach out to our community to see if we can just raise that money for the roof." And so, so thankful for this community. Within a week, probably within days, we had that money raised. We had $5,500 raised for our roof through very generous grants from four people, four businesses, including Iron Thunder. Grateful to them. So that's the kind of spirit that we have in our organization and, you know, goes into our building. Our deed for our building provides that if Main Street Guyman were to dissolve or close, that it would be sold and that that money would go to fund either a nursing or pre-med scholarship at OPSU, and that's because that was the building of Dr. Hayes. So that's why the medical thing. Our community reached, Taus and Daniel both talked about that little, about our Facebook page. It is tremendous. We have about 5,000 members, and in January, we had 13,000 views on our Facebook page, and in December, we had 10,000. And I don't know if y'all are on our Facebook page, but it's just tremendous. It doesn't just talk about Main Street Guyman and what we're doing, but it talks about our community. And one of the things that our director loves to do is to highlight our veterans and the banners that are going up on Main Street, and we love those, so. Buffy and Jeremy both talked about what a strong program that we have, and we do. We have, I think Jeremy said, we have one of the best in the state, and Melin is one of the best directors in the state. She has been nominated for Director of the Year at least four times, and she has been in the top three in the state at least three times. Like I said, I was really touched by what the pastor said about be a good citizen and obviously so impressed by Larry Bueller. And I know that you guys are serving up here as unpaid civil servants. We are very, very grateful for your service, and I know that your commitment is to represent the citizens of Guyman and to honor what the citizens of Guyman want. And I think that you can see and you know too, that the people of Guyman love Main Street Guyman and support it, and we're asking for your continued support of that program. And I would like to answer any questions that you have, and if I don't have the answer, we have other people here who can answer them, financial or whatever you have.
I had a list of questions I was gonna ask, but you covered everything.
Oh, I'm sorry.
There was my thunder.
All right, sorry.
I do, I would like to ask, would your board be receptive to having a council member on the board or a representative of the city? What I'm thinking is where the city could sit down with Main Street and say, "Okay, this is what we would like to see," or in return for our funding, our support.
We would love to have that. We actually had a discussion about that very thing a few days ago. Charles, like I said, Charles White was the founder of Main Street Guyman, and he told us that when the program originated, there was actually a contract between the city and Main Street Guyman, and there was actually somebody from the city on the board, and I think it was originally a city council member. But we would love to have somebody from the city. Soyla Medina served on the board for two terms, six years. So she was an integral part of that, and we were very, very fortunate to have her. And we would love to have somebody on our board from the city. That's something that we would welcome very much. I would also point out, a few years ago, Melin and I met with Mayor and changed the structure of the money that you had given us at that time to monthly, and one of the things that he had asked for is for Melin to come in, or for somebody from Main Street Guyman to come in every month for the city council so we can report to you. Our goal is to be as transparent as we possibly can. And I understand that you guys want to see where the money is going, where the money you're giving us is going, and we want to provide that information to you. And we would love to have somebody from the city.
Your statement answered.
But you can't miss four of the three meetings. In a row, in a row.
We're kinda used to that.
In a row.
You answered my questions both privately and tonight, and I found out some more information that I wasn't aware of. And these two young gentlemen here did an excellent job.
Good job, gentlemen.
Yes.
Very impressed, and I appreciate you taking the time and stepping up, and you make great citizens, or you are great citizens, really.
Yes. So we have these packets, including a ticket to our annual meeting, which is February the 19th. Would love to have you come. We've also included a sheet in there on who our board, who is on our board. Like I said, personal, people like myself, I'm not a business person. We have retailers. We have Susan Berias, obviously is a retailer. Kayla Reed's a retailer. We have Nick Tuttle, who's from OPSU. We have Julianne Graham from TCEC. I would like to ask our board members who are present here tonight to stand, so y'all can see them. Oh, I should've said Norma Green, also from PTCI. Christine Scott is from Bake at the Panhandle. Donna Riddle. Julianne, Charles, Nick Tuttle. Susan Berias. And I would like to ask everyone here who's come out tonight for our support to stand Thank you. Mayor?
I don't have a question, as I've, you've gone through, you've done an excellent job. And I sat down with Charles and Julianne one day, a couple of weeks ago.
Thank you for that.
Talking about this. And to be honest with you, it's just a comment that I'm gonna make. We removed line item funding in our budget this year, and that was the deal. And as I've explained to Charles, then, our intent was to fund all of these external things running through the Convention and Tourism Fund. And that was our intent. Maybe that's not the best thing. Maybe we need to discuss the other deal, but I think I can speak for all of us, so we don't, we don't want to see Main Street Guyman go away. We want it to be a part of the community, and I think tonight's answered a lot of questions, but it was all not intended to be that we're gonna jerk your funding. It was, we were looking at other avenues.
Thank you, Mayor. And like I said, our intent is to provide you every bit of information that you would like and to be as transparent as possible. And to be honest with you, I don't think that Main Street Guyman will survive without the funding, and I'm not saying that as a scare tactic or anything. We have met with our accountant to consider all of our options, and it's, you know, Melin, I know you know her, runs a very tight ship. We're a very, very frugal organization, and we have appreciated your support, and we would love to see it continue.
I do have one question.
Yes, sir.
Now, since it's not on the agenda, I had to vote on this, so it was just discussion, and when do you need an answer? Our next meeting is February 14th.
I will tell you that in meeting with our accountant, she had told us that without your funding, we were looking at closing our doors in about four to six months.
So we have a little time to get it done, work something out.
Oh, yeah, that was, that was two months ago when she told us that. Okay, so.
So now we have a little bit of time.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all so much, and young men, you did an excellent job. Thank you. Maybe you get two.
You can settle one, Dave.
All right. Well, thank you all, for everybody for coming out and supporting. Maybe you get two.
You can settle one, Dave.
All right. Well, thank you all for everybody for coming out and supporting Main Street. Agenda item number eight is presentation and discussion regarding Artist Incubation Incorporated. Their request to reinstate funding to Artist Incubation. And again, let me reiterate that, that the, that the funding was supposed to be requested through tourism. We didn't really jerk it. We did.
Come on up here with me. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Good evening.
In case anyone didn't know, Mr. Krone was on KQBS this week explaining your salaries up here. And he said it has doubled for him since he's been a member of this council.
He's earned it.
Zero times a year. So thank you for hearing us tonight. I want to first introduce you. This is Brenda Neville. She's been on our board two years. Most of you know her. You're going to get Quimby tonight because he's really sick. You don't even want to be around him right now. This is Daryl Manis. I'm going to let him talk to you in a minute. Did anyone know these two gentlemen right here? They're both, they've both come through OPSU. They're graduates of their, of the art department. And Sam is currently working across the street, Sam Ortiz. If you went to dinner on the lake, he did a great job at the last one. He put up our stage for the Hawaiian dancers. Some of you, I think, were there. Some of I see out here. He's done a lot of work for us. We're a small organization. Now, you've read, I think I sent you the summary and I don't know if our slideshow is rotating or if it needs to. It's just pictures of some of the events we've had.
I'm sorry, I haven't.
I don't know if she can run that or if she wants to. But I think, did each of you, were you able to view that? Because it was so large, I sent it through a Dropbox and you all kind of saw that. Want to tell you a story about, some of you go to the NFR. Last month, there were people from Gaiman at the NFR and there's a new art event there. If you buy a special ticket, where there's a live performing art event and it's done to music. And when you're done watching this performance, you see a nice new piece of work. You can enjoy a glass of wine or what have you. And if you had a ticket for that this year, you enjoyed that with a young gentleman from here, actually. And Wrangler is now creating a whole new line of clothing using his artwork. And that man is Chance Hayes and he came right across the street through that gallery. He learned to market himself, learned to make a business out of himself through Artist Incubation. And I think it's worth, I think it's a pretty big deal that Wrangler has made with him. His name is Chance Hayes. Do any of you guys remember him? He has come through here. Some of the things we do. Now, we, the things we do across the street at Artist Incubation are unduplicated in this market, but they're very complimentary. So making Gaiman a good place to live, work and play. We cover all three of those because we have people that work there. We have people that have created businesses through there. Some of you come to play and enjoy some of our nice evenings out and things that we do over there. So we feel that's complimentary for Gaiman. Let's see, Cricket is not here either. He has recently joined us as an advisor. I don't, his name is not Cricket. It's Jimmy Osaveto. He's the Director of Alternative Education at Gaiman Schools and he has joined us. So I wanted to talk about that. Let's see. Some of the things about what we have across the street, Woodward doesn't have what we have. A lot of towns don't have what we have. You don't have an artist incubator and a gallery and an art center that teaches lessons and that hosts events, that works with, with retail merchants and other organizations around town. And we hear that a lot when Leadership Oklahoma comes through. So I'm going to let Brenda talk to you how she views when Leadership Oklahoma comes through. And tomorrow, we're hosting Leadership Gaiman at the gallery at 3:00. If you want to come over and join us, that'll be a good time. We talk about our history there. I think Mr. Rodeo's coming in to talk. So we do things like that. We have receptions there. But the biggest of the year is, of course, Leadership Oklahoma. We have an opportunity. The Perriton mayor has noticed what we do and he is an art patron of ours. You probably know Kerry Simons, Mayor Peterson. And he has invited us. I think we're going to get some mural commissions. So Perriton's having their 100th celebration at Wheat Hart 100 year of, I guess Perriton being a, a city. But I think we're going to get some mural commissions to paint all over their buildings in Perriton. There's going to be several that we're going to do. There's going to come from right here. And we'll charge sales to their city. We'll pay, we'll pay a sales tax for that. That's going to happen this year. That's kind of, kind of cool. And they're going to have an art competition. So we thought that was kind of cool. And I'm going to save this last one for the end. The things that we do and sell over there generate sales tax. We pay that every month. I think the 20th of the following month. And I think the largest retail night for Gaiman, like of an evening during the year, is the event called Christmas, Christmas Open House. I think the retail sales that are made that night, other than Walmart, I'm talking, you know, downtown Gaiman area, happened because of that Christmas Open House. And it's not perfect, but we are striving to make it that way. So those are some of the events and you know about those. So I want to have Daryl Manis tell you about what he's up to.
First of all, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, council members, for having us here tonight. My name's Daryl Manis. I am a graduate of Panhandle State University and I was a former resident of Gaiman. I worked at Panhandle Printing for about two years for Mr. Larry Stump over there on the wall. And I really think that this is such an important organization and program that we provide for the community. But I would like to touch specifically as an OPSU grad of the benefits and the connection that we have with Panhandle State and the art department over there. Brian Test is one of the founding people of this entire gallery and this organization. And as the basically founder of the OPSU department, he was really, like he had the forethought to be able to create this kind of an organization and help this start for graduates such as myself to be able to put themselves out into the community and be able to actually learn marketing skills and promote themselves as professional artists through Artist Incubation. My very first show, I hosted at the Main Artery, not Main Arrie, excuse me, that's another gallery. The, before it was called the Wild Horse Gallery and now the All Fired Up Gallery. It's my very first show that I ever had with my wife. And it was my very first gallery that I was ever represented at as a student at Panhandle State. And not only that, my wife is a graduate of Panhandle State Art Department. I mean, we also have Chance Hayes, Hector Cobos Leon, all sorts of different artists who have Gaiman roots, who have been represented at this entity. And I personally just wanted to thank you for your previous support and would love to see the support continue as I begin my chapter as an advisory board member of this organization. We have sat down and talked about some of the things that we can improve. And we would love your support and your help so that we can make this basically a nice cultural, like crowning jewel of Gaiman. You can't find this in towns our size. And really, there's something that we have, something amazing here that towns like Woodward and Elk City, places like that, don't have this kind of a cultural connection. And like I said, I'm just here to voice my support for the continued support of the Artist Incubation and the All Fired Up Gallery. Thank you.
Thank you.
So this is the gentleman, Mr. Swager, that I told you. When we did the lateral transfer of the USDA incubator grant to do that remodel, put the kilns in and do all of that so we can have the incubator there. This guy volunteered a summer and, and tore out the walls, et cetera, you know, made all that happen. He's a great guy. He did a lot of volunteer work for that. That's the gentleman that did that. And he wanted to know how that money, I think you had asked me about, there was some money that came to Artist Incubation through the city of Gaiman because you were going to turn back to the USDA an incubator grant. And we happen to be a state certified incubator. So I do the paperwork. We do the paperwork every year to keep that certification up so that we, we can qualify for those kinds of grants on top. And we do seek for funding on our own. You know, there's not a lot at the Oklahoma Arts Council. There's like a couple of small, and we do maximize that too every year. We use that for our art classes. And I mean, the place was full. I don't know how many art students we had in our summer art camp. Over 70, I think, this last year. It's really growing. And we have an upcoming spring art camp coming up. Today, they put the sink in. If you want to stop in, the kitchen is so close, that licensed kitchen. Hopefully by fair time, people that do their jams and jellies can get that little sticker now, made in Gaiman. Sell it at your farmer's market. Sell it over here the other times of the week or year. And I think we can do something with that made in Gaiman. And I would like, Sam Ortiz, do you want to say anything? Let's let Brenda come up to talk about Leadership Oklahoma.
Hi. So nice to be here tonight. Thank you for having us. And Leadership Oklahoma comes up once a year. And the first time I, I did that, you know, I was there as, as a board member. And we helped sell pottery, paintings, whatever they're looking at. I was amazed at all of these people because they were so amazed at all that we had and how beautiful it was. And that is one of our most financially beneficial evenings. And these people are from all downstate and they're never the same every year. And every year I've been on the board that they've come through. I mean, we're like their last stop of the day. They're exhausted. They've been at Black Mesa all day. They don't want to leave. It is hard to, you know, always get them to leave because they buy a lot of stuff and they enjoy it. And we try to show them a, a nice evening to finish off. So that has been really enjoyable. This place is really excellent for Gaiman and for OPSU and all of the young art students. We do try to help them, give them a place to show their artwork and learn how to sell it and sell it. And they've gone on, many of them, to do things like they've previously told you. So I really hope that you will continue funding us. It is a terrific place to have a little bit of culture. We do try to do evening events and we'd love for you all to come. So thank you for your time this evening and we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time. As a, Sammy Ortiz, as a current student of art at OPSU, I just want to say that All Far Ad has given us all the support to become better artists and to start when it's hard on the art industry to start in the bigger leagues. It's a great opportunity for a new artist to become and have the experience of selling, networking and make relationships with the community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
You all have been with us quite, through quite a road over there to get where we are. So we thank you for it and we hope that we can find favor and that you'll be pleased to continue supporting us. How would we use the money? I, I think Larry, you had asked that in particular. Well, we've got some more to do on the kitchen. We've got to get supplies, stock items for that kitchen. We're going to be able, we got a $10,000 grant from the Cherokee Foundation. We're doing our own work and we're raising funds. But we're going to have to pay the lease on the appliances. We're going to have to buy pots, pans, utensils, those sorts of things to get the kitchen stocked, to get started. Some of it would be used for that. So anything else you need? Any questions?
Yeah, can you define incubator? I see you've got a certified incubator through the Department of Commerce. Define incubator.
So the, the program works, they can work through us to become a business. They, they go over there for two years and they're supposed to create a business. They come out of there and they, like Hector, has a business now. He moved it downstate. We've had others come through that now run a business. They've made a living through. So we teach them how to market themselves. We teach them how to have a work ethic, show up at work, how to do some, a little bit of bookwork, collect sales taxes, those sorts of things. And just what it takes to run a business. They're supposed to be, out to be a business. It's not that easy to do. We don't have that many, but we have enough to keep our certification.
Do they, do they pay a fee to utilize the?
They either pay us a fee or they can do some work. So they can do cleaning. They can keep the gallery open and that would account for part of that 50 of the $150 rental. So there's a rental agreement that we have with these incubator clients. We had thought we were going to have Dustin Martinez in here now and he's become such a rodeo champion that I don't know if he's going to make it in by April, but he was going to be our next client. So those are the types of people. So they sign an agreement and then they have to work so much and they have to pay so much.
With the, what you provided us shows that you're a 501(c) something.
C3.
Okay. Marsh, quite honestly, I look at this profit and loss that you provided to us for 2018. I'm, I'm, I'm not very smart on numbers and this looks more like a retail business than it does a 501 charitable organization. Could somebody enlighten me?
Well, thanks for bringing that up because, you know, I really do want the community to understand that a lot of nonprofit organizations, I don't, I don't know whether it's the Panhandle Lions or some of these organizations are 501. I think they are. We have a lot of charitable organizations around Gaiman, right? They can like go to the ambassador and have a lunch and have a meeting and they're done, but not us. We're a whole business and a 501(c) 3. We had to have a building and we had to have a mortgage, insurance, repairs. We had to have a whole new roof. We have to have staffing. We have to pay, make payroll, workman's comp, office supplies. We have all of the expenses a retailer has, yet we're a 501(c) 3. So it, it takes a lot of diligence to keep it going. But I mean, you have to be a 501(c) 3 to, to receive grants. I mean, there's a reason why we did it. I mean, it's to benefit, our mission is to create a new economy and culture based on art, including OPSU, so. And honestly, we've paid off our mortgage, what, three years ago? We've had some help from other people around town and another anonymous foundation that's helped us a lot. So unusual for a 501(c) 3 to have all of those expenses. So we're a business and a 501(c) 3 both. Does that answer that for you?
It does.
Thank you.
Now, okay, you work with OPSU. Do you have a direct, direct contact like with their arts department?
So like yesterday, we went, Brenda, if you want to explain it, we went to their, and, or is it a monthly meeting? How often, monthly meeting. So we were on their agenda yesterday. Because we had good news for them. We had, Perriton's going to commission us to do murals on the sides of their building for their 100th year celebration. That's big news. So we went and talked to the kids about that. And then there's some art competitions happening. They can win money. And I may have delivered a check, a commission check over there yesterday. So we do go over to the college and then about once a year, we have them over here and have a meal and explain to them the benefits of being represented in our gallery. And we ask every one of them to be present for Leadership Oklahoma because we told them, if you have work in the gallery and you work it right that night, you will make a sale. So they're learning to market themselves. They're learning what it takes to walk up to someone. You know, Brian, they're taught, take it off the wall if you see them looking at it. Put it in their hands. Can I wrap it up? Whatever your closing is. So that's a learning night for them. They're learning to be business people.
Do you have, you talk about your summer programs for youth. Do you have direct, like a relationship with the school?
We do. So Yvonne Sanger has been, she's a veteran teacher for us. She's taught those summer art camps for years. Josh Hoak has taught some of those. I believe these two gentlemen are both going to get involved with that. We're going to get to where we have classes once a month or more, Saturdays or what have you. After school program, we've just recently found Daryl again. So he's actually teaching, aren't you teaching school in Ulysses?
Yeah, I teach high school art.
But he's, he's from here. He's got family here. He graduated OPSU, but he's teaching. So there's still a connection. I mean, you still send students to OPSU from Ulysses, right? So, I mean, we're kind of branching out. But anyway, he is a part of us, but he's going to want to teach some classes, I think. I think Sam's going to want to teach some classes. So spring break, sometimes fall break and then that week in the summer. And then now we're going to get to where we have at least every, once a month, we're going to have classes. But now our classes go from youth to adults. So we've got from five years old through high school. And then Yvonne does a breakout during that summer and she does adult classes on, I think, Saturdays. And then she does intermittent classes once or twice a year for adults, pastels, whatever she. So we've got a wide range of people that take classes.
Ms. Strong, I have a question.
Ms. Strong, I have a question. You mentioned that the 501(c)(3) and a business. So your current business activities actually qualify as charitable activities under that section 501(c)(3)?
Yes.
So, the, you market these young artists, sell their paintings or sculptures or whatever? Do you charge a commission?
Yes.
Okay. So, does that not help fund what's going on? I mean...
It does. We just don't sell enough. You got to get everyone of you guys in there buying art, a little more, swap out your dishes and your cabinets.
What's that commission percentage?
So, so the commission breakdown is now 60/40. Most galleries are 50/50. So at 40% of what we sell, you can see we don't make ends meet. I really think, when we get these cooking classes going, it's going to really supplement and help us, but we've got to get this year to finish and get that going. We just had a group, TCEC, come in and speak with us, and Chris Purdy said, "Oh, I could see my wife and I coming in here one evening, learning how to make sauces," you know. And we really want this, because we want to have something cool to do. So, we can do those kinds of things. And they're going to leave there with a piece of art that has sales tax attached to it, by the way. We won't, we've learned that. Does that answer that?
It does. It does.
Any other questions?
Hope would be pleased to support us again. We hope we've earned your favor, and we'll keep working at it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Agenda item number nine is discussion and possible action to approve ordinance number 843, an ordinance amending Article 3.1 of the subdivision ordinance of the city of Guyman, Oklahoma, exempting parcels of property of one acre or less from the preliminary plat requirements of topographical survey map, repealing all other ordinances and parts of the ordinance in conflict therewith, providing for severability in declaring an emergency in the ordinances attached. Anybody have any questions?
I do. How big's an acre?
It's four, 45,360 feet.
Actually, it's 43,560.
43,560. Thank you for the correction.
You're welcome. No, we just learned, you know, we went through this final plating process.
Half a football field.
With, with part place.
I can understand that.
And, and, you know, with a small piece of ground, an acre of ground, you try to put a topographical map on top of that, makes it very busy. The other thing that we're looking at here is that typically what you, where you look at drainage and topography is during a site plan, where you know when you're actually going to have a building or parking lot, how that lot is going to be developed. At the preliminary plating stage, you don't necessarily know what's going to happen there. So, our recommendation is that we not require the topographical map survey as part of the preliminary plat, but we do require it when we do the site plan reviews. So you might also consider that same provision for larger tracts of land, but we thought, starting with this, an acre and left, an acre and less, then we could sort of test it to see how that works out. But typically, when you're, when you're plating vacant property, the owner may not know how the development's going to occur, what's going to be placed on that piece of property, unless they already have something pre-planned. So that's the idea behind the change.
Thank you. That answer your question?
Yes, sir, it does.
I was off 2,000.
That's pretty good.
Any other discussion, motion?
I make a motion that we approve ordinance number 843, amending Article 3 of the subdivision ordinance of the city of Guyman, exempting parcels of property, one acre or less, from preliminary plat requirement of topographic survey maps.
I'll say, do it.
Second. I've got a motion in a second.
Crown?
Aye.
Alvedres?
Aye.
Swager?
Aye.
Livinggood?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got five eyes.
I'd like to make a motion to declare this an emergency.
I'll second it.
Have a motion in a second.
Alvedres?
Aye.
Livinggood?
Aye.
Swager?
Aye.
Crown?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got five eyes.
Agenda item number 10 is discussion and possible action on approval of electric line easement between the city of Guyman and Tri-County Electric Cooperative. The easement is attached, site plan, it's in a vacated alley. Any discussion or questions?
I make a motion, we approve the easement, electronic line easement between the city of Guyman and Tri-County Electric Cooperative.
I'll second it.
Have a motion in a second.
Alvedres?
I'd like to know, sorry, gentlemen, I'd like to know...
There's a little yellow line.
Right. But, on the beneficiary side, the grantor...
Livinggood?
Aye.
Swager?
Aye.
Crown?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got five eyes.
Agenda item number 11 is discussion and possible action on approval of renewal invoice for software subscription services with Omnigo Software Information Technologies for $30,636 in the staff report and the invoices attached. And, anybody have any questions? Is this, is this yours, Jim, or Chief? Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is our annual license software subscription agreement for our invoice, what we pay every year for our records management. The tool that reports our crime statistics to cyber's and IFRS and the feds and the state. It also does our computer-aided dispatch. It holds our mobile license for our mobile computers in the car. It's kind of, it does everything we do for the department.
Okay. Apologize for mixing you up. Apologize for mixing you up.
Oh, that's okay.
Any questions, discussion?
I'll make a motion to approval of renewal invoice for software subscription service with Omnigo Software Information Technologies for $30,636.
Second.
Have a motion in a second.
Crown?
Aye.
Swager?
Aye.
Livinggood?
Aye.
Alvedres?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got five eyes.
You bet. Thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda item number 12 is discussion and possible action on approval of a co-location agreement between MidCon Recovery Solutions LLC and the city of Guyman for secure storage. I think this is your turn.
Yeah.
All right. Anybody have any questions about data storage?
It's needed.
It is?
Definitely.
You want to enlighten us just a little bit?
Certainly. When IBTS came in, they changed our backup method and installed a server that does backups during the day, and then it replicates that data over the internet at night to an off-site data storage warehouse, basically. With our termination of IBTS, we were left without any place to go to send that data. Our box holds about 11 terabytes, and right now we're at about 3 terabytes, and we're holding that data locally. And this MidCon solution is in Tulsa, and that was about the only thing we could find that was in the state of Oklahoma that Mr. Petty was agreeable to on our agreement. So this is kind of where we ended up. So...
Okay. Any questions? Discussion, motion?
I make a motion that we approve the co-location agreement between MidCon Recovery Solutions LLC, city of Guyman for secure storage, item 12. Second.
Have a motion in a second.
Swager?
Aye.
Crown?
Aye.
Alvedres?
Aye.
Livinggood?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got five eyes.
Agenda item number 13 is discussion and appointment of council members to serve on the convention and tourism board. There's a resolution attached, number 17-15, that we passed. If it'll wake, if I can get it to come up. That didn't hit. Anyway, we passed the ordinance back in October of 2017, that would change the format of the convention and tourism board's forced membership. It would require two, I believe, two members to be from the, three members should be, wait. My deal's not reading right. Oh, two of the members should be employed in the, something either in the hotel industry or the food and restaurant industry, and then that allows the vice mayor or a city council designate to be a representative, and the other two members could come from any, any place in the city. So, we've had some problems trying to get folks from the hotel motel restaurant and business deal that want to be on the tourism board. So, my recommendation is that we appoint Vice Mayor Larry Swager to that. Will you accept?
Yes, I will.
So, do we have a motion to do that?
I make a motion that we appoint via the nomination by Mayor Peterson, Larry Swager, to serve on the convention and tourism board, item 13.
Every time he shows up, they don't have a quorum.
Well, now he will.
I'll second that.
Have a motion in a second.
Swager?
I'll abstain.
Livinggood?
Aye.
Alvedres?
Aye.
Crown?
Aye.
Peterson?
I'm going to vote yes.
Five eyes.
Agenda item number 14 is discussion and possible action to appoint or reappoint members of various boards and commissions. Two terms expired December 31st of 2018. You all got a handout from Levona that lists people that have expressed an interest in being on the board, and they've completed an application. If you gentlemen would care to, we can act on each of those tonight, or we can wait till next week, whatever you'd like to do.
I'd like to, I'd like to propose, whoever makes a motion, that we accept the applications for the citizens that have completed an application for each of the respective boards.
Would you like me to read those and then make a motion?
If you would like.
For the airport board, we have one vacancy. Brent Brooks has completed an application and expressed an interest. Arts and Humanities, we have two vacancies, Rick Brady completed an application and expressed an interest. Convention and Tourism, Glenda Barbosa completed an application, expressed an interest. The golf ward, Bob Fagin completed an application, expressed an interest. And the tree board, Randy Costia completed an application and expressed an interest.
Mayor?
Yes?
I got another application just before the board meeting.
Okay.
Chris Shade would like to be on the library board.
Okay. Chris or Christine, everybody, I think, she used to work at the court clerk's office. So I'll add her name, Chris Shade, for the library board. That'll fill that board. So would you like to make a motion?
Yes. I'd like to make a motion to appoint various applicants, citizens who have completed an application to the respective boards as listed by Mayor Peterson.
I'll second it.
Have a motion in a second.
Swager?
Aye.
Livinggood?
Aye.
Alvedres?
Aye.
Crown?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got five eyes.
Now, is there any new business? Is there any new business? If not, we'll stand adjourned as the Guyman City Council. Let me find the right one here. We'll reconvene, yeah, it's one of them nights. We'll reconvene at regular meeting with the Guyman Utilities Authority. We've already approved the consent agenda. Agenda item number three is discussion and possible action to approve the purchase of 36 dumpsters from Downing Dumpster Supply at the price of $19,176. Staff report is attached.
I make the motion that we approve the purchase of 36 dumpsters from Downing Dumpster Supply at a price of $19,176, item 3.
I'll second it.
Have a motion in a second.
Swager?
Aye.
Livinggood?
Aye.
Alvedres?
Aye.
Crown?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got five eyes.
Is there any new business? If not, we'll stand adjourned. I want to thank all of you that stuck the whole deal out for coming.